... Dr. Banks, please pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
This is Lincoln County Commission regular session, February 20th, 2014, 6:00 PM. Members present are Darrell Baker-Clark, KK Matthews, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, Charles McCann, Commissioner. The meeting was called to order by Mary. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held February 6th, 2014, at 6:00 PM.
Is this all in favor? Yes. That being unanimous, then it carries. Let's go to public comments. Do you have anybody signed for public comment? All right. Let's see here. Can't read the writing. Yeah. Drug court, how about Rick McDowell with the Hartz Center?
You can see, Mr. Swanson, what happens.
Well, we have him on the agenda. We have Mr. Swanson. Judge, we have you on the agenda later on, in case there was possible action we didn't know. But this is kind of an update.
Yes. I wanted to give you an update on the Hartz Community Center. You know, we've had a lot of trouble with the weather, and so we were able to go out there today. We did the observation hole. This is a six-foot hole that you dig into the area where you're hoping to put the system in, and you check it to see what... They call it the limiting layer, and that's sort of the... As far down as you can go, and still have things perk out well. So we did that today. The next step is going to be to design a call for proposals that we would send out to people we know and run it in the newspaper, and get some bids, and go through the process where we have bids for it, and then bring those back. So we're moving on it. We're waiting on a day that's dry enough now to be the perk fest, so we have those numbers. But I just want to let you know, hadn't been forgotten.
Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome. And then, I think I'll do a two-for...
That's a courthouse roof.
Yes. The money that we've gotten to work on the roof of the courthouse, Mary and I...
Courthouse Facilities Grant.
Courthouse Facilities Grant. She'll keep me so that I can all these things straight. We've been talking about how to do this, and, you know, we got that... A really good report from the company that the courthouse facilities people hired to come and do an evaluation, showed all sorts of things that we might work on. The commission's got the grant, plus the commission matches $200,000 to get the roof fixed. The only drawback with the stuff that was prepared on it was that it really didn't have any specs.
Didn't?
It just said, "You guys need a new roof. It's leaking." And here's a hole here, and here's a hole there. And our feeling was that maybe, in the past, sometimes we bid things out without having decent specs. So, I don't know, nine years ago, is that when?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. When the roof was on...
The wall was still on the condition.
When the roof went on, it might have just... The bids might have been for, "We need somebody to put a new roof on the courthouse." Joe Bob's bid might have been for $12,000, and there might have been another bid for $25,000. Joe Bob didn't include flashing, and, you know, his mat was only two inches, and the other bid was for seven inches. So, we've been talking about how we think we ought to have a really specific bid for this roof. Well, neither Mary nor I... No, I don't think Darrell or you know enough about a roof to design a bid. So one of the things that we are allowed to do through West Virginia Code 5G11, which is part of what they call the QBS process, the Quality-Based Selection Process, that allows the commission to go through a process of engaging an architect or an engineer, probably that's what was happening, I think, across the street. And that organization would then design the bids, do the actual bidding stuff, supervise what would happen, you know, the actual work that was being done. So we're thinking that it might make sense to do that. And the way that process works is, it's sort of... I don't know how they got this through, but it's an interesting procedure because you don't bid out getting the architectural firms. You solicit them, and then you meet with them, and you decide which firm is the most qualified, and then you go into negotiations for the price, and then you make a decision. So it's a little different than doing an actual bid. So our thought is that it might make sense to use some of that money, that $200,000, to go through this process and engage an architectural firm who would take the lead and be responsible for making sure that this was done correctly. But we wanted to check with you all before we went ahead and did it. Okay. Do you want to see a flow chart of how that kind of...
Not a question.
Well, thank you.
That'd be something I'd like to put on the agenda for next week.
Well, it could be, or, I mean, the money is already there. However you all want to do it. I mean, it could be seen as just part of the process for this roof.
Well, I was just thinking along the lines of, is E.L. Robinson handling the other building over here?
Yes.
I, you know, I just wonder, you know, if I approach them and saying, you know, "We have this job here," and they're already familiar with things, and what are they for work they do, although, I mean, ever how you would want to do it. And I think that, you know, I don't want... You want to spend as least amount of money as we can on architectural-type things, so we have no money to put in on the actual fixing of the roof itself.
Right. Well, we could ask E.L. Robinson. We could consider them as one of the people we sent out, or whatever you call it, a request for...
We could have like three groups that you pick from. And we were using the ones that, Siling, S.I.L.O.N.G., group, because they did the assessment to start with, the Facilities Grant people, and they came through all 55 counties, and they gave us that report, and then Mr. Hammond and stuff, we used their report, got it to get the grant, and we got it. So we were just, you know...
Well, I mean, whatever the coach requires to be, you know, if we have to talk to three of them, we can talk to three of them. I mean, I think it's fine.
I could see how you could decide this is just a part of the... We've already got the money, the $200,000, it's just part of rolling it out, or could get to it.
I just wonder sometimes when they're doing other jobs in areas, it's a lot easier for them to walk across the street versus getting other people in. But I mean, whatever we require from these one.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be down here next Friday.
E.L. Robinson, yes.
Yeah. So that'll be probably the time to talk to them, too.
Well, we probably shouldn't talk to them until we actually fully put this...
Yeah, put everything together.
What's it called, the QBS request out? Do you want me to come back the next time and ask for a formal motion on it?
Yeah, that's what we'll have to do.
Okay.
We'll actually have... I mean, if we have to make... If we have to move on this, then we'll have to put it in... And they'll have to be on the agenda in order for us to do it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do it. Thanks. David Miller.
I don't hear nothing.
Okay. Rick Elton, Hartz Community Center.
He's not... Maybe he's not... He hasn't been here. Maybe he hasn't really signed the right law.
All right. Everything's hanging in there. The only thing I would like to maybe further announce, if we can... As soon as we find out when Commissioner Agriculture Walt Helman is going to come back down to the center to discuss agricultural issues, veterans to farms, and farm-to-school type issues that he was planning on doing last Thursday, I'll make sure everybody gets it, get it out on the Hartz, on our community center, so we can get some good attendance there, trying to encourage all the veterans around to come. But it's not just for veterans, it's also for anybody interested in just farming, just trying to get in with the state program and maybe get some money or some ideas to make Lincoln County a little bit more agriculturally productive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. All right. We don't really have anything else in public comment. Discussion of concern, possible action. We had a letter from Larry Stutler. Did y'all have a chance to read the letter? If not, I'll read it to you. This is from the Lincoln E.D.A. It says, "Commissioners, as you are aware of the Lincoln... The Lincoln Economic Development of Florida recently purchased property on Route 214 in Allen Creek. It is the intention of the Board to construct a facility on this property for a farmer's market, featuring both seasonal vendors, permanent retailers, and some limited office space. While this process goes forward, the E.D.A. would like to open the property up for an open-air farmer's market to operate this season. This will help to develop traffic coming to an actual farmer's market area, market in that area, and provide an immediate outlet for local producers. Getting the property ready for this season will require minimal yet necessary site work. This will include stone base with gravel overlay, a 40-foot by 12-inch culvert pipe, necessary lot dressing and ditching for water control, and associated labor installation. Additionally, it will be necessary to identify the site for the future... As the future home of the farmer's market, the Lincoln E.D.A. is asking the county commission to fund this expense, not to exceed $12,500." What's the word, Commissioner?
So I guess, as you said on this, you're a sport of it.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I am. And I think it's... And I think it's important for the farmers, whenever they come in, you know, one of the things I think that the E.D.A., you know, with the discussion with the farmer's market was, was trying to get something built maybe this year, and with different things, going through the bylaws, you know, working with the farmers to try to get licensing, insurance, different things like that, I don't think it was, as far as the construction, we couldn't do it this year. But in order to develop a customer base, I feel like that it's probably in the best interest, if we can go ahead and get a fresh air market, if we can foot the bill for this, to get this fresh air market going, then, you know, you start developing customers. And that's one of the main things. If, you know, whenever you set up your business, you have a select few customers that are going to come in there, and it would be nice that if we could do that. So I am for this.
If we didn't prove the property, you know, somebody in the county decides they don't need that or don't miss except if they want to sell just to make profitable access or whatever.
Right.
How much should we pay it with that? I'll see.
There's a motion. In a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that unanimous?
Yes.
All right. The motion carries. All right, let's go to Judge Thompson regarding National Drug Court Conference and funding to attend.
Thank you very much. I think y'all might remember, I was here last year about the same... Asking about the same thing. Plus, if y'all have any questions today about how Drug Courts do longer, their report, I'm happy to answer. I ask y'all to support that. I think y'all should be allowed to ask me questions about it. Conference this year is in Anaheim, May 28th through May 31st. Estimate the cost to be about $2,500 to $3,000. Break it down. Lodging's going to be about $500 to $600. Flight's going to be about $600 to $700. Using the mills on the per diem, federal per diem rate's going to be about $3.55, and the conference registration itself is going to be about $700. I will say, Supreme Court this year used to pay for me, and used to pay for Drug Court Coordinator, and actually, they paid for a few more. They paid for none this year, so we're having to locally fund everybody going. Luckily, we have some money through the day report, for me to go. This is so we can get some more team members to go.
You're talking about $3,000?
About $3,000.
Less.
And I will tell you, it's a good conference. It is a national conference that I've been to, I think, three so far. The good thing about it, everybody here's been to like some type of conference per year, trying to look for the door, and trying to get out the door as soon as you can, because the people who's talking up there don't know anything about what they're talking about. These people do. Plus, you get to see experiences, what we are experiencing now, maybe someplace in Alabama or Minnesota, or some other place in the country experienced two years ago, and, for example, like the imitation marijuana imitation cocaine that's coming in. It's been in other places before here, so they've sort of told us what to expect, how to deal with it. It gives you good ideas. They bring in national experts, the drug testing, I'm always really interested in that, not so much in how they actually do it, as how the people try to figure out ways around it. So we're basically getting what other people's learned across the country, bringing it back to our bellywake to learn how to apply to us. It's a good conference. It's a... One that, I'll be honest, I wouldn't go... I guess California's okay. I wouldn't go and take a week out of my schedule to go if I didn't think I was learning something. And yes, it is something to work on. So I'm asking for...
You know, I just think it's... This is so important to propagate what you all have done, I mean, and seeing it from the end, I do as a physician, and E.L.'s and the same people you all deal with, you know, they... It is making a difference. I mean, there is... It does give people an alternative. It does give people some hope, and, you know, a lot of times, that's all it takes. But I mean, I think, you know, from what I can see, and of course, we're prejudiced with you guys anyway, but I think you all have done a really good job of not only carrying things forward, but starting and getting things going. And, you know, you can start at the first level and build on it, and to other people's experience. You know, you're talking about different communities and things of that nature. I went back and... I started going to Montana in 1988 to hunt, and I watched what meth did to those Indian on the reservation out there. It was amazing. And I mean, we didn't have a problem back here then, but I could actually... It actually hit those a lot sooner than it did us, and I mean, completely devastated some of those little Cheyenne and some of those people out there, or youth, right where they really need the future. But I think addressing it as we are, it gives them an opportunity to get out of the rut they're in. And that's really what a lot of them need.
For example, today, we have Drug Court today. Had one gentleman in there that's due to graduate probably in the next two months. He was able to get a job with the gas companies. They're working him to death. I think what he said, you had phoned him yesterday. This is somebody who was sitting in jail when I started. I had another gentleman who has been playing since about November, asked me for a job reference today. You know, I mean, it's... He had had a job, he had lost a job because they did a background check on him. They did the background check because they were actually wanting to write him to the manager. So he's now asking me for later, and I'm willing to give it to him, saying, "Yes, he is going to the US, and he's supposed to end Drug Court," and he was a night pool pulling out of jails. I mean, these are not people that were pulled off the street, a lot of them are pulled out of jails, trying to help, or keeping them from going to jail for...
You know, and not only does that have a positive economic impact, but them working, they're not paying for them. Like, we're not...
This is somebody who's not paying them.
And that's...
He's probably making more than me if he's working 91 hours a week, $20 an hour. He's probably bringing a bigger paycheck than I am. But that's a good thing, you know, misses, and, you know, they're paying fines, they're paying, you know, rather than being drains on society, they're starting to contribute to society.
Sounds a bit weird, I think.
Yeah, I just, being a young judge, when he started this thing, it just... He impressed me, and still does, that he cares enough about this part of our society, that he's willing to put something out there, and maybe he didn't even know where he's going, and how he's going to get it.
We got to do something while we were doing it, right?
And it's just so good that you're here trying to make that happen.
And I think we're the one... I mean, probation offices, we've got the best in the state, in my opinion. Our day report, we were able to basically... It was here when I started, but it was not a lot. And I would now consider it one of the top two or three day reports in the state. We have other judges that will come in occasionally and watch how we do things. And we're not perfect. I mean, we make mistakes.
We're one of the largest drug courts in our state. And we just had our review with the Supreme Court this week, and actually, yesterday and tonight, and they didn't ask a question that we couldn't answer, and I think we're probably going to come out near perfect in the review, so...
And I appreciate y'all's support. If y'all didn't support the day report, Drug Courts, we wouldn't be here. And I think it's a wise investment for you.
I wouldn't motion again.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Then the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a cluster talk, you'd see Disney like on the hotel room.
Ray's just trying to figure out where to go. Do y'all really want to pay the extra $600?
All right, we're... Next order of business, we have Dwight Love, Julie, regarding deeds, right-of-ways, and surveys. Mr. Love, Julie?
Yep. I can give it all together here.
We've... I'll let Doc Banks kind of...
Well, we kind of discussed what he knew about the situation, things of that nature. In the past, I don't know if we've ever dealt with anything other than like estate hearings and things like that, so I don't know that because of the fact that if we might have to hear this in the county court, it might be best for us to go ahead and ask you to see the prosecutor and talk to him about where this needs to be handled at, because if we have to rule on this later on, we would need all parties here. You know, if there's another party involved, it's just like, it wouldn't be fair if they brought something before us, and you had a right to have a say-so in it. We also would have to have them here to have say-so if we had a hearing on this. So, and it was just my suggestion to Commission President, we might want to just go ahead and have you talk with Mr. Gaypart about this, to see which direction you need to go.
And what we'll do is, and that's... And what we'll do is, we'll send this to Gaypart, the prosecutor, and then he can get in touch with you, and it would be... It would probably be best to do that. And then if we have to have a hearing, then we're not... No one can say that we have been prejudiced with your information before it happens. So, you know, just trying to foresee anything that would come down the line. So I think it might be best to do it that way, and then he can set up a hearing with us if we need a hearing, and then we can probably do it in a much informal setting than right here. And, you know, if there's anything that needs to be laid out, then we can do it. We can have... Take some time and take care of it. Okay?
So the material I have now, you don't want to hear nothing?
Not right now. But what we want to do is...
When... I'm asking the question, when is it going to?
As soon as we get a hold of Gaypart, the prosecutor, okay, and find out what direction that we need to go with, okay?
Well, there's a number of things that's going to be...
Right. I understand. But what it is, is that's... I think that's probably the best way to handle it right now. Okay?
Well, you know, my dad always said, "A minute was the longest time that you're ever with." And everybody says, "Well, wait a minute. Five minutes later, wait a minute."
Well, I'll tell you what...
And I put, you know, Commissioners, listen, I've been through hell for 20 years. Me and my wife is no longer being able to stand with the pressure that we're being put under. And I hold these offices right here responsible for it, and I'll prove it.
Well, I think that's...
So, you know, I don't want to be cut short. I don't want no favors. I want what's right. And I need to know from Mr. Baker's office, from Mr. Bunfield's office, even the sheriff's office. I want some things cleared up, straightened up, and organized, and I want something done.
Well, I mean, but that's... I think that's the best way to go, okay? I mean, if we would say that we would hear this today, then, you know, if we would have to, you know, take action on something today, and there was other people that were involved, okay, then there would probably be other... You know, there would be other things that we would have to deal with because of that. If we go ahead and we send this to Gaypart tomorrow, all right, and have him contact you, all right, and maybe set up an informal meeting with him, the prosecutor, and then what we can do is find out the best way to handle your case, all right?
And he may say it's in front of us.
Right. If he says, "The county commission can hear this," and, you know, and what he's going to do is, he's going to say, you know, of course, we'll have to have, I'm sure, whenever you talk with him, there'll be other parties that may want, you know, have to appear, or something of that nature, then we will have to set it up and do it that way. Okay?
Because lawyers, that doesn't pay them enough.
Well, this is the prosecutor, so this is not something that you're not going to have to pay to talk to him.
So how is he going to... How is he going to go through all the number of things that I need to get straightened out?
He's going to have to sit down. He's going to sit down and talk to you, to see what it is that if we would need to hear this, or if this is going to have to be heard somewhere else. Okay? All right?
Well, there's one thing that is in there. That is, I think right now it needs to be mentioned, and that is, we've sent a letter from the Census Office of the land valuation as it's increased, and the land that there is, there's a screw-up on 10.62 tent acres, and then there's 8.68 tent acres. So I paid taxes on that for 28 years, just paid it in July. And so, I need to... I need to get this thing, because I don't need to wait, or no need to wait. Not waiting is everybody else's...
I'm not asking to wait, I'm asking, we want to... We don't want to make... We don't want to do anything in haste, and I'm not going to direct you...
That's...
I know you.
I agree.
I'm not going to tell you that, you know, we're going to do something, we're not going to do it. But the thing about it is, we got to do the right thing.
I agree.
And I mean, you know, so if we have an understanding that we can send it there, we can actually have him look at this, okay, and talk to you about it, and then what we can do is, we can... If they... If it has to come before us, see, that's the whole thing. We have to find out where it's going to come. Does it come before us, or does it go to the circuit court? Can we hear it, or does the circuit court have to hear it? Okay? And that's what we have to... You know, there's certain things that we hear, and there's certain things that we don't hear.
And one of the reasons you do it this way is that if we would listen to you and rule in your favor tonight, whomever we would rule against, they could get an attorney and say, "This wasn't set up legally." See, you have to have hearings set up in advance, all the parties involved had to be notified and things of that nature. So we really couldn't rule on it tonight, and even if we wanted to, you know, it made me objected to it.
Right.
If we do it the way we're talking about it, and it comes before us, and everybody gives their information, then we can rule on it, and there's no basis for objection based upon the fact that the other party wasn't here. It protects you in doing it this way, it really does. It doesn't have you sitting and doing this, this, and this to someone, because we don't even know, I don't know, that we have the authority to rule on it yet. But that's what the prosecutor will tell us. The prosecutor tells us, "He sat down with you, he went over this, and it can be heard in county court." And that protects your rights. I mean, and that's the way it should be. And there, I'm sure if there's a problem with the appraisal and things like that, there's ways to get through that, too. I mean, you know, we've been meeting as Board of Equilization Review and things of that nature to handle things that come up like that.
But as Mr. Matthews mentioned, driveways, property, damages, deeds, you know, there's a number of things now, are those all going to be considered when I go with him, like presented off?
Well, what we will ask him to do is to look at everything you have and advise us on which way we are to proceed and which way you might proceed.
Well, you do see there's a lot here.
Yes.
Yes, we do. And that's the whole thing, is that we would have to have, if we were looking at something as far as legality, we have to have legal counsel here, too, which would be the prosecutor.
Right.
And so, you know, this way, it gets everything going in the right direction. I don't know... I don't know, you know, if you filed any kind of paperwork as far as, uh, wanting to have this looked at or not, but this is the way you get it done.
This is how you do it.
What we're telling you to do is the way that we feel is the best way to get it taken care of one way or the other. I mean, you know, uh, wherever you take it, it might be in front of us in circuit court or whomever, and, and we may or may not agree with you, or the, the circuit court may or may not agree with you, but at least you'll know, and this is the way you gotta go about getting it. This is the procedure that you would want to follow to get there, and that's what we're, we're saying that we'll do tonight.
Okay? Mr. Lovejoy? We'll ha, we'll, we will send this, this information, your name, and what we have here regarding the deeds, right-ofways, and surveys, we'll be giving that to Mr. Gaypart tomorrow. Okay?
Can I have your phone number again, just to make sure?
Three oh four, five two four, two four six four.
Two four six four.
Okay.
You're married?
Yeah.
Yep. You've done a good job though, when I called you.
Thank you.
You're the only one.
No, thank you.
Everybody's in the field, or everybody's this and that, so I appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
But, uh, yeah, there, I mean, uh, seems like I'm just held at hostage.
Well, but I think that this is the, this is the route. I mean, we have to have a path to go on. We have to have a route to go to in order to find some type of resolution to your situation. And we have to, you know, and we have to do it legally. Um, and.
Hey, I, I, I'd love to have some of the parties right here with me. Uh, it don't bother me none.
Well, and that's really, you know, I think to settle, settle these type things, that's what needs to be done, you know. Somewhere, you're gonna have to have a hearing, whether it be county, county court, the circuit court, and, and county court. And, uh, and when they, when you have that hearing, that will allow you to have your say-so, and if they have something to say, allow them to have their say-so. You can get a judgment on it. I mean, you can get some kind of definitive answer. Because I know, I, I know you've, they've been working this a long time, and, uh, and, but, but, you know, it's also the first night I've heard of it. And, and what I try to do is get you as quickly resolved as possible, and I think the best way to do that is let the prosecutor advise us on what we should do about it, and he can talk to you about what you should do about it, so.
But this is the first step. Okay?
I'll, I would prefer to go before you three, Mr. Four-Four, Baker's involved in it too. I know.
But, um, but we're going to see if we can legally hear, if we can hear this, okay? And if we can, we will. All right? And then, you know, we'll have to set up a time, whenever you all, when you can come in, or the, you know, all the parties that are, you know, involved.
I'll stay awake.
Okay? Okay, Mr. Lovejoy?
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I'll make sure to wait simply for the prosecutor.
Okay.
And he asks about what we should do.
Do we have enough information to tell them what we're talking about, how long we're talking about?
Well, I, I don't either, and I think that's, uh.
I mean, all, you know, all he, he mentioned to me was that he needed to see, so I don't really have enough to tell. I could tell Mr. Gaypart to contact him, is that okay?
Right, well, and that's what needs to be done, because, uh, he doesn't know, and I don't know whether we can hear this case, you know, and, and I, and, and if we do hear it, we want to make sure all parties are here, so if we do rule, we're going to stand. But I, I think that, you know, there's no other way that you can do it, but I, because, you know, we have to get, what, two or three weeks' notice for hearings and things like that, and.
At least twenty, thirty, thirty days for notice of hearing, and then.
So, but this gets you in that procedure to where he can determine what your direction is you have to go with.
Do we have to have a, do we have to have a motion to send it to him?
I don't know. I, I would think without, without a motion, the commission has made a decision on what they want to do.
Well, I'll second that motion to send this to him.
Can you word it in the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, yeah.
Just have Mr. Gaypart contact Mr. Lovejoy maybe.
Yeah, you're going, you're going in his, uh, his department about deeds, right-ofways, and surveys.
Okay. You know, our concern, our concern is whether, uh, you know, where, where we stand at with his situation. I, I would want to know that, 'cause this might come up in the future too.
Of course.
And, and, you know, and I think we'd have to have some idea of whether this is, whether he can say, well, this is, this is something that's handled for met forever, then I think that, that would be, it's kind of less what we have to do, you know, uh.
But is this involved probably the commission owns, or is this involved probably just the Lovejoy family owns?
I think this is, um, goes back to deeds.
Let me go to, in nineteen eighty-six, I worked man up there for a dollar sixty-five there when I started working. I worked my way through life to get a job right into money. I saved money, and I bought three tracts of land. Mr. Givens a little bit of a part. I did my part. I did my deed search and abstract, three and a half acres sold out. As it stands right now, over there in Mr. Baker's office, I'm less than ten acres of land. And that's, and eighty thousand dollars worth of stuff that I went through with lawyers and property and right-ofways and driveways, it's been done, so. And, and deeds, and deeds, so all that, all that, you can hear that on, and, and I, I'm, I'm willing to work, it's pretty tough to wait.
Well, then that's where we don't need to hear anything right now.
That's just.
Well, and I, and I think that's the whole thing. This, this, to be honest with you, you know, uh, and I don't know if Mr. Pan's going across it, but we've dealt with estate hearings before, but I don't even know that this, this would be, you know, if the county.
I guess that's what I was trying to figure out.
To hear it, and that's the question that I would pose to Mr. Gaypart when we ask him about this, was, do we have any authority to hear it? Or, uh, because, you know, fourteen years, we haven't heard a case like this, and, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about. As far as my reading of the code, which I, I don't remember at all, but the only thing that I think we're empowered to do is work with estates. And I don't know that we're, you know, if this was a piece of land that the commission owned.
If it's going to be, it's circuit court scene anyway.
Yeah, and I, and I would think that would be.
Up here?
Judge Hope's court seen me like four.
I've been there. I've been there.
Well, if whatever happens here goes up there, if, if it's contested, so I just seen me like four.
And I'm told I have to have a lawyer.
Well, I suspect they give you good advice.
Mr. McCann, I'm sorry, it wasn't any good advice.
Well, I mean, if I'm in a court system, I.
I want to stop being there, and being there, and being there. And, hey, I got proof right in here of the stuff that's in this courthouse. There's deeds wrong, there's wheels wrong, there is surveys wrong. There's a lot of stuff in this courthouse that's been on for years, and mine started back in nineteen ninety-five. And I would lay out the case of that, when, wherever, here, or up there when I talk to the.
We have, we, we have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Is there, uh, is there, uh, any discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Um, is that unanimous?
Yes.
When it was? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, so.
I will tell Mr. Lovejoy that Mr. Gaypart is out of town till Monday, so he won't be on code tomorrow, just.
You're counting minutes.
No, I'm trying to help you, so tell him they won't be in town today.
I'm trying to narrow his minutes down.
Right, I was just trying to let you, Doc, expect one tomorrow. He'll have to, you know, get with you next week.
'Cause with this, I was wanting to give you all a hundred and forty-four thousand minutes.
Right.
It's ten days and ten nights, so, but that's, that's fine.
But I appreciate you coming in, it's real.
Thank you. I'm through.
All right, um, doesn't look like we have anything under unfinished business, possible, possible action.